Today is, it's a regular city commission meeting in the city of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, May 4th, 7:31 PM. Call this meeting to order. For the invocation.
Good evening. Please borrow our heads. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you give us on a daily basis and many times, the times that we may take them for granted. Lord, we ask that you give clarity and guidance to our city leaders and newly elected officials so that they continue to make the right decisions when it comes to the wellness of the city and its residents. Please protect our military servicemen and women as well as our law enforcement officers and firefighters so that they may return home safely after their tour of duty. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Chief Avila for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yes, good evening. Roll call, item, item three. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Press.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Okay, can we take all of the minutes together? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion or second, can you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, had you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Thank you.
All right, at this moment, Madam Clerk, I think we're gonna defer item A from the agenda because the family's not here. And out of, I wanna take out of order item B for the fire chief who is here with us.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, sir. Please be advised that there, Chief Kaminsky is waiting for Maria Reyes who's bringing in the, um, the PowerPoint presentation.
Got it. So let's move on to public comments. Is anyone here for the comment? No. Report to the city manager.
Thank you. I have a verbal report this evening. Mr. Mayor, I have, um, I have a report from the accounting department on the expenses related to the Easter egg hunt, a very successful one, if I may say. The city spent a total of $10,154.38. We received $1,000 in contribution. We estimated that the event would cost $8,500. So we came in pretty close, uh, thanks to the $1,000 donation. So that is my report. I will provide everyone with copies, which has a line item on all the expenses associated with the event. The next item in my report is the City of West Miami Recreation Center has published, published the 2022 summer camp. Um, I sent out copies to the mayor and commissioners so that you could share those with your constituents. The summer camp flyer is already posted in the city's website, our social media pages, and we sent out a blast email to those residents that have recorded their email address with the city. So at your leisure, please take a look at the flyer so that you can talk to our neighbors about the services. The next item in my report, I've made a note, the city has started to collect budget data on June 1st, 2022. As customary, this, the Office of Property Appraisal will be delivering the preliminary assessment values for the City of West Miami tax rolls. So that's gonna give us a pretty good idea of where the city's going to be in terms of assessed values and, and what we should be planning for. On July 1st, this, the property appraiser's office will, will be rolling out the DR 420 form, which is the formula that sets the mileage rate, um, to an exact amount budgeted at nine, 95%. So budget, uh, we are in budget mode and we will be working with the mayor and commissioners in the coming weeks so that we can entertain your projects and revisit those that have been accomplished and those that have not. And so we'll address all those issues and anything new that the new members of the city commission bring to the table. Um, at the next meeting, we're, we're going to need to select our tentative and final budget hearing dates for the month of September. The preliminary budget, which is the manager's budget, gets presented at the second meeting in July. We have started negotiations with the South Florida Police Benevolent Association. We had a productive first meeting this past Monday. We will be meeting and regrouping in the next two weeks and I will be reaching out to the mayor and commissioners, um, whenever we have something that we would like to, for, where, where the membership agrees and obviously to bring it before the commission. Last but not least, I was advised this afternoon via an email from District 6's office that Commissioner Sosa is donating $6,150 for vouchers for children who live in the City of West Miami and the surrounding area, children within District 6. Um, it'll pay for 30 children to participate six weeks in the summer camp program in the City of West Miami. That concludes my report. I have some other pending matters that I spoke to Commissioner, Vice Mayor Blanes about yesterday and I don't know if you want me to go into these real quick just to give everyone a status of where we're at or if we take it up.
Yeah, might as well, yeah, while they're preparing the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. Um, the street signs, Vice Mayor Blanes, you'll be happy to hear that the city opened bids today for the new City of West Miami welcome signs. Uh, we should have something for you to consider at the next agenda. We're reviewing the bids and, um, I'm sure the city engineer and the director of public works will be putting together, uh, something and meeting with, with us and we'll bring a unified recommendation at the next commission meeting. As for the block street signs, they continue to be work in progress. However, there have been delays for the past three months due to the preparation of the induction ceremony. Um, the mayor's office is being remodeled, which was a project that had been in the pipeline for quite some time. We felt that due to the very deteriorated condition of the old office, we need to expedite the remodeling project. This employee who's working on this project was ill for two months and unable to work. Therefore, this is the very same employee that works on preparing, on making the preparations for the actual block streets signs. And obviously, I can't go into any health details here. Code enforcement, the city has been addressing code enforcement of hedges. Uh, this effort was initiated by my office, um, due to the number of homes where some hedges are over nine to 12 feet in height in some of the front setback areas. Um, this has obviously nothing to do, we recognize, we do have a, an amendment to the ordinance, so I actually had a conversation with Mr. Pena and, and Mr. Garcia and moving forward, we will be working, um, on a courtesy system. We're gonna be using door hangers, reminding our residents of what the regulations are and we're going to try to work, um, and I call it an honor system, uh, before we have to resort to any type of violations. Um, there is an issue that I know has been, um, an issue brought, uh, forth by Vice Mayor Blanes, our garbage cans. Some of the residents of the City of West Miami have been given a courtesy notice. Some residents have complied, others cannot comply because they're simply frail and are unable to bring the garbage bins inside their property. I'm gonna be meeting with Mr. Pena to see if we can get a list of those residents that cannot bring their garbage cans to the back or to the side of the property to see if our sanitation crew can identify those with special needs so that we can go ahead and bring these garbage cans in. We're gonna need a little bit of time on that, but we will work with an honor system again, if you would, on these items. Um, so I, again, I look forward to working with you, hearing from all of you on these matters. We are not turning a blind eye on things that have been in progress, but when you have a small staff, you have to sort of prioritize. Every day, you have new priorities and you have different situations. So I just want you to know that the work is in progress, we're not ignoring it and, um, if you have any questions, please feel free to inquire at your leisure. Thank you, sir.
Chief, are you ready or still need some IT work?
Hi, Maria. Good evening.
How are you? Chief, good to have you.
Good evening. Uh, pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. Uh, good evening, Mayor Diaz-Padrón, Vice Mayor Blanes, Commissioners Blanco, Suarez, and Chavez, Village Manager Aguilar, as well as attorney and, uh, my name's Alan Kaminsky, Fire Chief for Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. It's a true privilege and honor to be here in front of West Miami this evening. Uh, just a little background on me, a 27-year veteran of the fire department, been with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue since 1995. I was promoted to Fire Chief in December of 2019. Certified firefighter, paramedic, I hold all ranks within the civil service and been all throughout in regards to, uh, the fire department. Next slide, sir. A little department overview. Uh, we originated in 1935, largest fire department in Southeast United States, among the top 10 largest in the nation. Currently, we have over 2,800 employees, 2,100 sworn certified firefighter, EMT or paramedics, uh, as well as 700 civilian support staff. We have 157 frontline units, 62 ALS transport units, 60 suppression units, 71 fire rescue stations, two full-time air rescue helicopters, two full-time fireboats. We're accredited by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International and our insurance service officer ISO rating is a 2.2X. Next slide, please. A few other highlights in regards to EMS, emergency medical services. Miami-Dade County residents have the highest survival rate in the nation from blocked coronary artery disease. We're part of the STEMI network, which represents ST elevation, myocardial infarction, also part of a county-wide stroke network. Uh, the Office of Emergency Management, OEM, also resides within Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. They manage the county's emergency operations center, known as the EOC, coordinates emergency response recovery plans, and they're also accredited by the Emergency Management Accreditation Program, known as EMAP. Excellent. Uh, in 2021, we had four classes hired, so we had the privilege of 96 new firefighters joining us in the rank and file. Other highlights in 2021, uh, we had a few new units put in service, Rescue 77 down in Homestead, uh, new Fireboat 21. Uh, we also had a new vessel, Fireboat 73 out of the Port of Miami, as well as four new helicopters. We have two frontline, uh, AW 139 Augusta helicopters, one Air Rescue South, one Air Rescue North, and then we have two additional helicopters as spare. Uh, also on April 4th, we added Rescue 13 to East Kendall area and Rescue 74 to the Cutler Bay area. On July 1st, so we have scheduled Rescue 17 to go in service, which will be in the Virginia Gardens area. Next slide. On 2021, we had, uh, two stations, uh, one Station 29, which is in the city of Sweetwater. Uh, that was a knockdown and a rebuild, so it was a privilege to have that station open back up April of 2021. We also had a groundbreaking of Station 68, which will be our Dolphid Mall station. MDFR has had the privilege of serving the City of West Miami since 1981. Uh, in 2021, MDFR responded to 1,094 emergency calls within the city. Uh, 93% of the primary responses to the city were provided by the station right next door, Station 40, as well as Station 3 Tropical Park. Uh, Station 40, I guess we go to the next slide, uh, Station 40 consisted of 87% of the calls here in West Miami, uh, Station 3, 6%. We have seven fire rescue stations within five miles of the city. Uh, Station 40, which has one rescue, one ALS engine, uh, Station 3, one rescue, one ALS engine, Station 47, one rescue, one ALS engine, ALS being advanced life support. Uh, Station 14, one rescue, one ALS engine, and one battalion chief. Station 48, one rescue, one ALS engine. Station 13, one rescue, one 78-foot ALS ladder truck, as well as one air truck. And Station 17, uh, one ALS engine and one antivenom unit. So total units serving the city is 16 units. As I stated, one battalion chief, six rescues, seven suppressions, one air truck, and one antivenom unit. Uh, daily, there are 50 firefighters on duty assigned to these units serving the City of West Miami within the five miles. Uh, Rescue 13, as I stated, we did place that in service on April 4th to the East Kendall area. Uh, next slide is just a map, the stations that I just listed, just showing all within the five miles to the City of West Miami. In 2021, incidents and response times, a life-threatening number of incidents was 608. Uh, MDFR's response time was 6 minutes and 5 seconds. To structure and other fires, we had 87 incidents. Uh, MDFR's response time was 6 minutes and 18 seconds. Uh, life-threatening county-wide average, we're at 7 minutes and 27 seconds. Uh, here within the city, we're at 6 minutes and 5 seconds. Uh, to structure fires and other fires, county-wide, it's 7 minutes and 38 seconds. Uh, city average is 6 minutes and 18 seconds. Uh, for, up to March of 2022, for the life-threatening incidents, we had 43. Uh, average response time for MDFR was 6 minutes and 2 seconds. To our structures and other fires, we had 15 incidents, uh, response time was 6 minutes and 14 seconds. And again, just showing our county average for the first three months, county-wide, it's 7 minutes and 19 seconds to life-threatening, uh, within the city, it's 6 minutes and 2 seconds. For structure fire incidents, county-wide average is 6 minutes and 51 seconds and here within the city, it's 6 minutes and 14 seconds. Uh, for 2021, our customer feedback survey, uh, what we do is 20% of our MDFR, uh, medical patients, medical calls that we have, uh, we send surveys and get responses. Uh, here within the city, we had 19 city residents respond with an overall score of 4.96 out of 5. A 99% satisfactory rate. Our county-wide overall score is 4.88. As a fire chief, this means the most when I read these, uh, the feedback that we get from the customers we provided service to. This service incident was on behalf of my mother, who is 88 years old and not very mobile. Uh, the responding paramedics were very professional and caring. We very much appreciate their quick and highly competent assistance with much gratitude of city resident. And then that's what means the most to us when we get that, that feedback, knowing we made a difference and served the public well. And that concludes, uh, you know, my overview of 2021 presentation and any questions you may have, you have it answered.
Well, first of all, it's, uh, it's an honor to have you here on International Firefighters' Day. I think today's right, I think, well, you guys should know. Um, obviously, yeah, um, the guys at Station 40, I've gotten to know them a lot better in the last year. They're, aside from excellent people, um, incredibly service-oriented for the community and they are, they are part of our city like probably no other fire station in Miami-Dade Fire Station in their cities. They are, they are incredible. La familia, the 40. Um, we also have to be really blessed that we have the fire station so close in, in our cities, I mean, so close to all the residents. Those, those one-minute, uh, differences in the county average to the city average, you guys tell me, I mean, on those life threat, on these life-threatening incidents have to be massive, that, that minute. Um, and for that, we have to thank a lot to also Commissioner Sosa, who was instrumental in bringing that, that, that station there. Um, Chief, you're, you're guys are doing an amazing job. We're very thankful, um, for the job they do. We're, we're, I think personally, on behalf of the residents, very happy in the service at the county that your department is, is, uh, is, is doing for us. And, um, I don't have any questions. I mean, frankly, I'm, I just wanna thank you for, for the job that you guys are doing on, on your behalf.
Thank you.
Again, thank, oh, I'm sorry.
Same goes here, Chief. Thank you for all you do, thank you for your leadership, your service, uh, to all the men and women of the Miami-Dade Fire Department. Thank you.
I have something to say, Mr. Kaminsky.
Yes, sir.
It's a nice last name, very Polish. Uh, Mr. Kaminsky, let me tell you, uh, husband, different times, I travel out of Miami in different countries and for some reason, some accident has been a fire, something's happened around the world. And when we talking about, I am from Miami, the people always make reference to the fire department. Uh, our people go to different parts of the world to help and to teach the, the local how to help. So as a resident, and I mean, like me, most of us, all, I delay, all of us, we are very proud of that work, Miami-Dade Fire Department. We are very proud to have these two millennials here, what, no, no, one millennium, this is not a millennium. But we're very proud to have here two members to, to the fire department, really, congratulations. It's an honor that you visit us and the way you do your work. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Honored is all mine to be here this evening and, and to provide the service to West Miami and we are, you know, your fire department. It's a true honor and privilege to serve you and the residents of West Miami.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Um, I think we have some of the reports to get, uh, oh, yes, please, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you hear a sound and it sounds something loud, our police officers are training downstairs and they're practicing with a bolo rap. And so, um, don't think that there's anything wrong going on, please.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wondering about that.
Be at ease, be at ease. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, I think, uh, item seven.
Item seven, before the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney at this point.
Beautiful. And Mr. Alonso.
My only report is ongoing projects, uh, so we have currently two projects in design, uh, a couple of spot drainage projects that we're wrapping up and a Phase 1B of the water projects, as well as Phase 2. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're near completion on design on those two projects, so hopefully, uh, as I said in the last meeting, hopefully you guys will be seeing, uh, us moving forward with RFPing that, uh, in the near future here. So that, that's all I got right now.
Okay, I, I just, just want to, I guess, not make a report, but, um, kind of report to a conversation that we've had, um, on drainage projects. Um, I think that we're gonna go ahead and try to find what are the biggest drainage issues in the city. I know, uh, the vice mayor had one that he had brought up before on one of these streets. What are the, are the biggest flood incidents that we, we have still in the city to see we, we attack them with the American Rescue Plan, um, funding? So if, if you know of any that are prevalent to you, please communicate that with the manager, um, and that way we can start to track them. Go ahead.
Madam Manager, don't you have a list of these areas?
I do, um, the 16th Avenue and Southwest 11th Street, that appears to be the worst area in the eastern part of the city.
There's another one, uh, uh, from a resident that lives on, um, near there. It's, it's near.
It's between 59th and 60th.
Right, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And it's a corner house and, and she sent pictures.
Yes, sir.
Of how badly it floods when it rains.
Yes, sir. And so. I believe that there is an assessment and we can obviously share with the mayor and sort of re-introduce you to, to that area. That seems to be the worst spot. Um, I believe a while back ago, uh, we sent that to you and you prepared for the city an estimate of a couple of scenarios that we could be looking at as far as drainage improvements.
Yeah, so I, I don't wanna go too deep into this, on, on this, I just wanna make it aware, so in case you guys are.
There are three or four pockets in the, in the city.
Yeah, I, I, there's not that many, but we, I, we, we had a conversation about taking them together.
Yes.
To make that bid, uh, more cost efficient.
Yeah, currently, we have two, two spots that were on our list that we, that we're addressing currently. Um, but yes, if, if, you know, I think we need to discuss exactly how much funding we have and then how much, uh, how many, uh, things we can address on the list. So, uh, obviously, the more we put together and packaged to put out an RFP is gonna be more advantageous to the city in terms of cost. Um, so yeah, we wanna try to get everything done at the same time if possible.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything for the engineer?
Nope.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Yes, item nine, committee reports. Report of the mayor.
Uh, I don't have a report this evening.
Any other committee? Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11C. This is a first reading, in ordnance of the mayor on the city commission of the City of West Miami, repealing and replacing Chapter 4, Hamilton filed Article 2, Section 419, permitting dogs to defecate or urinate prohibited. Amending language, including assessment of fine to owners of dogs in violation of this section, providing for conflict correction, providing for separability, providing for an effective date by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
This is a first reading. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All right, uh, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, had you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. And the second reading is, uh, is scheduled for June 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Um, just a programming note here, um, we have the mitigations, item D and E coming up now. Um, are, are the, are the residents here for that?
No. I don't see anybody on that item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, so we'll, we'll call those items now, pardon to further them, but if we can move up item H, um, to, because I know we're here in the room now and I know it's very important for a lot of people here, so, but let's, uh, let's do item D and E. I guess we're gonna defer them.
Yes, just, uh, just defer this item until next meeting if you are considering, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, uh, let's defer items D and E. Um, can I get it all in favor?
Yeah. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, and then let's take item H out of order.
Item H, yes. Item H, request for reconsideration of approval of specialist premier plan development for 5920 Southwest 8th Street Renaissance Ballrooms, Inc., by Vice Mayor Blanes.
So before you go, Vice, Vice Mayor, I, I know there's some letters in the pocket. Um, you wanna let the, the owner and applicant speak on this?
Sure, that would be proper, yeah.
James Williams, the office is the Hall and Knight, located 71 Brickell Avenue. I'm here with my colleague Hugo Arza. I'm also here with some of the property owners, Rosa Carreros, and applicants represented by Lynn Pinero. Um, we, we welcome this opportunity for this reconsideration on, on the application because when we left you last, uh, there were some questions on the operations and the limitations and in terms of disabilities, of what disabilities would be approved and be permitted at the property. So, Ms. Aguilera's actually said that her small, her staff is small, but it's one of the most efficient and easiest to work with staff members. I've, I've had the pleasure.
Thank you.
So in that sense, it's, it's, it's been amazing.
Thank you.
So we've had, um, we've had conversations, we've had meetings trying to address those concerns and we think we have. Um, the last time we spoke, one of the main concerns was the age limitation. So what we did is we've, we've, we've updated a letter of clarification, we submitted it. Um, it was submitted on April 27th. We've revised the letter of intent and we've put a restriction, it says, the project shall be limited to seniors who are 55 years and older in age. So that's the first restriction we've done. The second restriction is the, um, it say, it states, should such patients older than 55 also be diagnosed with mental disabilities, only those involving memory care disorders, which would include Alzheimer's and dementia of the like, would be permitted at the facility. So this is the two conditions we put on the record and, and we hope that satisfies those questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm sure that you understand the reason why I brought this up for reconsideration. You know, there were a lot of things that were said that, you know, I thought about afterwards, you know, that left, you know, a lot of, a lot of open, open-ended things, you know, that I didn't know how it would turn out. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure that I speak for all of us here, I, I want this project to be successful. I want it to be as successful as possible because that way, you know, it will guarantee that it will not have an impact on the residents of the City of West Miami and that it's not gonna cause any issues or tax the resources. So believe me, I, I want you all to be successful and make a lot of money. Okay? So, uh, you know, with that said, I really do appreciate, you know, the, the letters submitted and, um, I believe that they should be, um, entered on the record as a condition uh, to the, to the project. Is, is, is this correct, Mr. Attorney?
To the application, sir.
To the application, so.
Without objection by the petition, is that correct, sir?
No objection. I, I, the only thing I would like to say is, um, at the last hearing, we had talked, we had talked with the neighbors and, and I said on the record, um, but it wasn't in the resolution. I just wanna put it, make sure that it's in there because whenever I discuss anything with the neighbors, I wanna make sure we adhere to it. Um, and so I, I saw in the resolution, it was missing, I just wanna make sure that we have from the garage, that we're, we're gonna prefer to put signage that requires you to exit Southwest 8th Street. Um, and then when you make a right out of the garage, we're gonna put additional signage, uh, before you hit that parking lot along Salvigno Boulevard, that'll say no exit through that, through that parking lot so that we reduce any movement to Salvigno Boulevard, the residential area. Um, but I did wanna make sure that was on the record again.
Right, okay, thank you. Right, okay, thank you. And your presentation was great. You know, there was nothing bad to say about it. But, you know, there's a few things said that, you know, made me think about it. And, you know, I mean, when you do a project of this monumental, you know, you've gotta have all your ducks lined up.
Yeah.
You know, and it seemed like, you know, the cart was being put in front of the bull. I mean, you know, a project of this immensity, you go to the bank and you borrow $50 million. Well, the bankers are gonna want to know how you're gonna make money. What's your plan? How you gonna operate it? What's your formula, right? And I hope that you guys have all that, so.
We do. We also, we have here Alan Solar. He has over 20 years of operations experience with healthcare resorts. We also have the property owner who would like her to speak. She can speak just on her intent behind the project. But he has over 20 years of operational experience. So if you have any questions in terms of operations, he's here to help answer those. Since this is a very, we're still in the preliminary part of the project, trying to make sure it's an approved project. It's one of those things that, I agree with you. You almost put in the cart before a horse in certain instances, because we need to make sure that this is a viable thing to go through and that the city would endorse it. But, you know, I agree with you. The questions you stated, they were 100% valid and understandable, and that's why we wanted to make sure we got those addressed.
The building is beautiful. Now, what you're gonna do inside is a different story, and that was my concern.
100% agree.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No.
I don't want to, yeah, go ahead.
Just a comment before I owe you. Please, don't forget tonight, you papers.
His mic?
Your papers? Don't forget tonight.
No, no, I definitely won't. I definitely won't. But any excuse to see staff is always a great one for me, so.
Oh, wow, okay.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm just a simple attorney. So the, this letter of clarification with the conditions, the project shall be limited to seniors who are 55 years and older in age. And number two, should such patients older than 55 also be diagnosed with mental disabilities, only those involving memory care disorders, Alzheimer's, dementia, and the like will be accepted. That is part of the special use application, meaning that if in the future, them or anyone, anyone who gets the property from a sale would be subject to that and can only change that coming for another special use application, right?
Yes, sir. Running with the property, as they said, they might sell or whatever, and it would be any subsequent owner is totally obligated to the City of West Miami.
And you are obviously in agreement with that?
Yes, in addition to the garage signage.
Correct. Go ahead.
Your mic is off, Commissioner Blanes. Your mic.
Suarez.
I'm sorry, Suarez.
Turn the mic on.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just want to ask that we would talk about a wall. You remember the wall? You're going to put a wall with the lights and on the side?
Yeah, that's in the.
You agree with that?
Yes, that's the design phase.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
Okay, does this require a vote to be put into the application, or is that just something that they have just agreed to?
Well, it would be up to the commission to request, at this point, there's a reconsideration without objection by the petitioner. So anything that you impose at this point will be part of the application originally, and it would have to be, as I said, covenant running with the land. So it would be up to you to request that.
Do you actually suggest that Vice Mayor Blanes opens reconsideration and then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Vice Mayor, make your motion. Can we provide the wording on this?
Would it be to withdraw the reconsideration?
No, it would be to open the reconsideration, to amend the application, right?
That is correct, sir.
So can you provide some wording on a motion for the Vice Mayor?
Well, you want a motion now?
Yep.
A motion to withdraw the reconsideration, is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Motion.
Okay, all right. So the motion would be to withdraw the reconsideration, since subsequently, these letters with these conditions have been submitted, and these letters and everything therein will be entered into the record. And, you know, and because of that.
I made part of the application.
As the main part of the application. And with that said, I make a motion to, I guess, would be to withdraw, withdraw the reconsideration.
So your motion to withdraw the reconsideration and amend the special use application to include the letter of clarification?
The application has to include as anything that is said today.
That's your motion, correct. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Second.
You have a second? Please call the rule.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, since the property owner is here, would you mind if she says a couple of words?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always a valued member of our community.
First of all, I want to thank you guys very much for your help this evening. It's a very exciting project for us. It's gonna be a legacy for our city of West Miami. It's gonna be something that we're gonna be very proud of. When we started over 25 years ago, we got a blighted property that was orange on the corner of Silvania. A lot of the guys here know, because we've known them for several years. And encouraged by our mayor, we bought the property. The city helped us develop the property, and it is what we have there today, which we are extremely proud of. Again, I want to thank the mayor, which I have not known yet. I wanted to thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to congratulate you on your new commission job.
Thank you very much.
And again, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. We're gonna make you proud.
Thank you, and I want to take this moment to thank you and your family. I know we, you guys catered the meals for our homebound seniors throughout the pandemic. So I want to personally thank you and your family on the.
You know what they say, one hand washes the other, and we've always worked together with the police department, with the city, with our residents, with everybody who needs our help. We're there for you guys always, and hopefully, it's gonna be the same thing with this. This is gonna be the envy of Miami-Dade County. West Miami is gonna put its mark in this community. Thank you so much.
The palace, the palace hoop, right? The palace hoop?
Palace to the Riviera, eh.
From your mouth to God's ear.
Mr. Mayor, a matter of housekeeping?
Of course.
This item, this specific item that we suggested, subsequent to the discussion, was not in the agenda. Pursuant to our rules, you can amend the agenda by a vote of the commission. And we would suggest that the resolution two that was adopted on the last commission meeting be incorporated herein. And the new application, the new items that are going to go into application to be made of part of that specific resolution.
Okay. All right, so.
Yeah, that was attorney's talk there, you know.
All right, I went to law school. So what do you want us to do?
Somebody translate.
I want you to amend the agenda to include the new resolution.
Okay, and that requires a fourth fiscal. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to include the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. So the resolution is incorporated in this agenda as part of the records with the new, with the conditions that were discussed and presented by the applicant.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
And be entered as part of the permanent resolution and project.
With the prior resolution that was adopted.
Thank you all.
Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
All righty. Now that the legal stuff is done, let's go back to the order of the agenda.
Yes, we go to item F, Mr. Mayor. Should I proceed?
Yes, please.
Item 11F, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami directing the manager designated to install the official motto of the United States and the state of Florida in God We Trust Behind the Days in the City of West Miami Commission chambers. The city manager shall have 90 days from the effective date of this resolution to effectuate such installation, providing for effective date by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
So this is a matter that I hope I have all the support of the commission on to bring, to bring God back into the lives of, into government in a society when coaches can't even pray on their football fields. You know, we shouldn't be hiding from God ever, right? So the, In God We Trust is actually the national motto of the United States. It's the official motto of the state of Florida. It's on every coin. It's not a controversial phrase, and it shouldn't be. So I would like, and I provide an exhibit, and I don't know if it's in the packet, to be put somewhere here on the top, on the top of, above the seal. And if I have the support of the commission, that would, you know, we would like to direct the manager to go about doing that.
You got my support.
Yes.
I agree with that. It's part of our history.
Before reading this, I would have assumed that that was already on the wall. I'm more than happy to support.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Next item?
Next item.
Yes, item G, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami directing the city engineer to analyze whether objective data supports lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour in certain areas of the City of West Miami. The city engineer shall report any and all findings to the city commission within 60 days from the effective date of this resolution, providing for an effective date by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
So this item is very important to me. Walking the city during the last election, I think the thing I heard from every single resident on every street, no matter how much of a side street it was, is that my street is a highway. And it was, that wording used over and over and over. That difference in 5 miles an hour might sound little, but it is actually massive when you look at the data on life-threatening injuries. On top of that, when you have a post-25 mile an hour speed limit, people who go to the edge of what they can do will have to think 5 miles an hour lower, right? If you think you can do 40 on a 30, you know, you can do 35 on a 25. And from an enforcement angle, I imagine the police, for the police, it's the same as enforcing a 30 mile an hour limit, just 5 mile an hour lower. I mean, I don't see it as an inhibitor to enforcement. This is for the residential streets. This resolution would direct Mr. Alonso to come back with a report on, well, actually, could you speak to this? Yeah. The City of Coral Gables did it recently, and a lot of the city residential portions of City of Miami have taken this step as well. So it's actually one in uniformity with the area. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think a lot of municipalities have done this. I did reach out to the county, or contact over at the county, to kind of, you know, get an idea of what this was gonna take. And, you know, initially, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be too big of an issue getting the studies prepared and getting that approved through the county, which we will have to do. I think one thing I had mentioned to the mayor is, you know, we need to follow the process and just make sure that we do things right, because it will affect how you can enforce this stuff down the line. So, you know, we'll come back. We'll do a full report on what it's gonna take to get there. And not only in terms of the studies that need to occur to get that approved, but also what the cost is gonna be to obviously, you know, upgrade the signs and all that.
Right, and I think part of the discussion with the manager was her suggestion that she believes that the signage replacements could come from a half penny?
Yes, as well as the cost for the study. So we'll get a proposal if it's within my threshold. I have some authorization in the code that will allow me to spend X amount of monies. If it's more than that, we will get a proposal from Frank and bring it at the next commission meeting.
And you mentioned to me that the, because we did a citywide traffic study in 2020?
Yes, 2018. I think it's when we initiated it.
Initiated, completed in 2020?
Yeah.
That what we would probably need is just supplementary data?
Yeah, hopefully, because we did, as part of that study, we did a speed study, so we do have speed data from throughout the city. We'll just get with our traffic engineer and make sure that what we have is sufficient, make sure that the county is gonna be happy with it. It didn't sound like, in speaking to the county, it sounded like what we've done might be sufficient, just because they're not looking for us to test every single street. They just want a data set from across the city. So I think what we have in the study would be sufficient, but we'll have to verify.
Right, so the process, just for everyone's knowledge, is we have to have a justification from our engineer. At that point, we ask the county. The county then gives a recommendation to the county commission. County commission actually votes on it as from their body. At that point, we can then pass an order, and it's changing the posted speed limit. So it's a four-step process. It takes a while, but I think it's well worth it. Please, if anyone has any questions with the engineer, this report just asked to come back with a report.
I have a question for the engineer and for you. Let me tell you something, Mr. Mayor. Many years ago, I was, many years ago. I remember that was about 1967. Here was a company they called Allied Parcel Services. Was the only delivery company in Miami that delivered from Sears, from Luria, from different stores to your home. You buy in the store, and then they give you address, and they deliver to your home. And we delivered a lot of detergent from Sears to the Coral Gables families. That was, in that time, you know, was a different, everything was different. And I remember I was making a delivery in Coral Gables, and the police in a motorcycle stopped me and put me in a speeding fine. I went to the court discussing with the judge if he can give me a chance. And the judge told me, I never forget, Mr. Suarez, if you are making deliveries or whatever, if you don't see a speed sign around, the speed limit in Coral Gables in their county is 30 miles. If you have any kind of moment that you don't know what the speed is, just go to 30. You will be illegal. Never go over 30. I said, and then that time, I never go over 30, because those times, $30 a fine was a week of work. We make $50, $60 a week for work. That was in the 60s. And then 50 years ago, was in Coral Gables, a commissioner, a very nice guy. You know him, and you know him, and everybody knows him, Cabrera. Commissioner Cabrera, his father was a car racer in Havana. And Cabrera came here, he went to several cities with a proposal about putting the speed limit to 25 miles. And I remember he had some difficulties with that, especially with the drivers from the school buses. They said if they had to go to 25 miles, they cannot go on time to pick up the kids and then deliver the kids in the afternoon. And he has some difficulties with other people who have a transportation in there. So my recommendation to you, you are the mayor, I'm the commissioner, but I think I can give you a recommendation, right?
Of course.
You can be my grandson. And before we make a resolution, make a study, with the police, call the engineers, because, you know, it may be.
You were absolutely right. In fact, what this resolution is, is to do the study. I'm not saying let's do.
Well, he said the resolution.
Right, it says to.
Resolution of the mayor and city commissioner.
To, and to, the directs, Mr. Alonso?
The manager doesn't install, so.
No, 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 directs, no, that's item F. Item G directs the engineer to analyze the data, and he's gonna come back and say what study.
Let me see if I read what item is, E or F?
It's item G.
Item G.
Item G.
G.
G. G como.
D.
No, G como.
Como good.
Como good.
Like God.
Like God, like God.
Okay, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami. Resolution of the mayor and city commissioner of the city of West Miami directing the city engineer to analyze, but we are going to make a resolution or you just...
To analyze.
The resolution is just, is just...
I'm talking to the mayor, please.
The, the, the resolution is just...
What I don't want to confuse, I understand.
No, the resolution is just to have Mr. Alonso come back to us with, with a plan to study it.
I recommend you making a study.
Absolutely.
And get the police involved and get the engineer involved.
Absolutely.
And get involved, because I remember Cabrera was here. Ask him.
Oh, I...
You know Cabrera?
Cabrera was, was the beginning of my political career. When I was, when I was in high school, I helped run his campaigns.
Ask Cabrera when he was a commissioner in Coral Gables. Thank you, thank you.
No, thank you, thank you. So, yes, this, this, to clarify the resolution, has Mr. Alonso come back and provide us a game plan for how to, for a study, for to make, to make sure what data we need in order to see if it's objectively a good idea. So, on that, can I get a motion on this resolution?
Motion. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five zero item passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Mayor.
And, and, and I, I agree with Commissioner Suarez on, on making sure the data is, is there. Next item, item I.
I, yes, discussion in reference to possible change of polling place by designating the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility building as the only voting venue for all elections. This is by Commissioner Blanca.
Yes, I hope I can get your help on this. I think it's the best thing for the future elections to be done at Rebecca Sosa facility.
So, I have, I have thoughts, but I want to open it up to the table first. Does anyone have any thoughts on this?
So, I just want some clarity. All elections?
Yes.
So, when we say, when we say all elections, what is that, what is that?
How about early voting, early voting? Does that include early voting?
Well, I, I know you discussed with the manager, so, so, Madam Manager, do you want to answer your questions?
Thank you. And, and the point, this issue is on the agenda because of the lack of parking in front of City Hall. And obviously, we're going to have now have early voting at the community center, and that displaces those seniors that do drive to the city and like to park in front. It displaces city residents for a long period of time, extended period of time, and long hours of the day for, for continuous parking. And so, Commissioner Blanca brought to my attention the need to consider relocating it to the Rebecca Sosa multifamily, multi-purpose, multifamily, multi-purpose facility. The reason for that is obviously, it's a nicer venue, the poll workers are going to work very comfortably there, they have a kitchen and a very nice restroom facility, just like we have here next door. But the voters will have more opportunity for parking.
Right. And, and if I can cut you off, what has always frustrated me is, and I, I know that we have to get the Elections Department to sign off on this if we choose to go that route, but what has always frustrated me was that on, for our election day, on, for the early, for our election day, the people from our precinct, which our precinct, the precinct that we have is, follows the lines of the city of West Miami completely, right? There's, there's nobody else in our precinct except city of Miami, city of West Miami residents.
Right.
And our precinct has to go vote outside the city.
That's right.
And it's always frustrated me that people from outside our precinct vote at the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose. And it's never made any sense to me why we, why our residents have to go to Open Bible when people from outside our city then go to Rebecca Sosa. So, that, that to me would be an incredible recommendation off the bat, just on that. On everything else, what are the elections that would, that would cover? It would cover election day?
Election day, early voting.
Early voting.
City of West Miami municipal elections and the primaries.
So...
And November, of course.
So, my position, and I want to hear from the table, my position is I think it's a very interesting idea, especially for election day. Obviously, I would want to hear back from the Elections Department, which we have to anyways, because they, they approve. But, but I think it's a very interesting idea, and on election day especially, I, I would be very in favor. But I want to hear from the table.
I think this was brought up in the past, and I believe that it wasn't well received. I mean, it makes all the sense in the world, but, Madam Manager, if you're going to elaborate a little bit, of, of, you know, because I think this was, this was suggested in the past. And I remember you saying something about the people from the Elections Department not liking it there, they liked it more at the, at the senior center because, you know, it was better situated for them.
Well, the poll workers seem to, to like the senior center, but it's been years, it really has. And I don't, I don't know if you remember, commissioners, that we have two precincts, right? An area had the 426 precinct and 427.
Now, we only have one precinct.
I know, we only have one. But in the past, even residents of the city of West Miami had two voting places, the community center and the actual church on Southwest 16th Street, where the charter school is at now. So, it doesn't make sense to have city of West Miami residents, you know, united, the two, the, the Elections Department united the two precincts into one and have us going to vote outside the city. I think it's a transition, like everything, people have to get used to it. And now is a good, I think, trial run to put it at the multi-purpose facility building at the park and, and try to have people start to identify with that, with that venue.
But of course, the, the Elections Department is the ultimate decider of that.
They are the ultimate decisions, and for that, I will, you know, I will invite you to listen to the clerk, she's done some preliminary work on that.
Before, before we listen to that, I guess the, the point I'm trying to make is...
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
In this case, I think the most important thing for us, for the residents, is what about, how many days? Are we going to wait to close the rec?
No, we're not going to close the rec. That's the building. The only thing that, well, the building is also rented for private parties.
I know.
So, for early voting, we would have two weekends where we would have to block out the calendar and not rent it for any type of event. Once the equipment is in there, it's basically the jurisdiction of the county. We cannot enter that site. This year, we have a nine-week summer camp program. A matter of fact, usually, our summer program is 10 weeks, when most other programs in Miami-Dade County is a six to seven-week program. So, we provide a longer summer camp program.
Well, my question would be, can we use the building and the rec be open in elections?
Yes, of course. That does not affect the...
It's totally separate?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And you check with the...
Yeah, that was, that was going to be, that was going to be my next.
With the children, because to me, here, we have a problem with the park. But the last elections, there your, some spaces were just for the voters. And now, I don't know, if there, you have to do the same thing, some spaces for the voters. But the most important thing that you have to put in the balance is what about the children, the rec?
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner.
And my question to you, Madam Manager, did you take into consideration all the, the activities at the rec concerning the children and the summer camp and the after-school service that we provide?
Well, every, the after-school basically starts right after the early voting cycle. I understand that to be, now, that changes every election cycle. Your August elections are all, they don't fall on the same date every two years, but they are consistently towards the middle of August. That's the time then when the kids start going back to school. You have kids that go to parochial schools, other kids who go to public schools. So, the kids are not on the same schedule in going back to school.
Is the, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt you?
It's okay.
Is the, is the traffic, is the parking situation in the, on the weekends, right, in, on that two week, in that, that two-week period of early voting? Or the weekend part, is, is, is the party situation bad during the weekends at the rec?
No.
I don't, I mean, bad meaning that is there's a lot of activities, I, I know...
Unless it's rented during the weekends for a birthday party, but what we would do in this case would be have to block those two weekends off completely to allow parking for voters only and poll workers.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Joanna, when you're talking about party, it's a Sunday or Saturday. When we're talking about election, it's 15 days, Monday, Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
So, compare a party with election, it's two weeks.
What she's talking about is blocking off the, the rentals for those, for those two weekends.
Yeah, but you're blocking the rental. But my question, could be a question to all of you, is that the elections are two weeks, a special, a special election, November elections, the elections are before the date, are two weeks, always are two weeks or longer.
Yep.
So, so... Festivity is a, a wedding. Well, a wedding is a Sunday, it's a weekend. I'm not talking about that, this is one or two days. I'm talking about the space of the, the time, two weeks for election. Now, check with John and you, especially people who have young kids.
So, I, 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 I think from, and, and just, just to get a poll of the, of the room, excuse me, for election day, right, forget about early voting for now, for election day, for November elections, are we all in agreement that it is, is a better site for our residents at Open Bible Temple?
I, I, I believe so, I do.
Because they, every, we have to go to Open Bible Temple right now on election day.
Yeah.
I think that location is better for us if the county were to allow it.
That's right.
So, so the Elections Department will actually have to change and issue new voter registration cards with...
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to issue new voter registration cards.
With a new address.
Madam Clerk, I don't know if you have information on that?
Okay. For election, city of West Miami elections, the polling place designated is 426. That you can change by ordinance, because our Code of Ordinance provides for the, for that, designating a polling place. Section 223 is polling place designated, which is, we can change by ordinance and...
We can change by ordinance, what, for the, for the November elections?
Biennial, no, biennial municipal elections.
For city of West Miami municipal elections. County elections, they may, they have the ability to change polling places, re, I mean, relocate polling places. And as a matter of fact, I was in conversations with Joanka Dominguez, she is the polling place coordinator at, in Miami-Dade County Elections Department. And I, before this discussion took place, I had already, I had a conversation with her, making comments to her that it was, for me, I didn't understand why the city of West Miami residents had to vote at a place, at a site that was outside of city's boundaries. And if there is, if there wasn't any possibility of us change, of that to be changed, and she told me that, yes. And actually, I spoke with her today, and the only requirement that she says in order to submit the, the request to the supervisor of election, who ultimately will authorize that change, is to the consent of this commission to let them know that we, that we have intentions of, or a request to change the polling place from the Templo de la Biblia Abierta to the West, to the West Miami Rebecca Sosa building. Now, a clarification, I do not think that what has been approved already for this coming primary and general elections, early voting has been already approved. I, I can call Miriam Rivera, the coordinator for early voting, but I don't think that can be changed as, as, as this, at this point.
For August, correct?
For August, not November, because that's a process that has, is in route already. I don't think that can be changed. I can get back to you on that.
Well, let's do this, and if you, if you, if you would allow me, now this is your item, Commissioner, but let's, let's do this. Let's, there's three different elections. There's municipal elections, there's the early voting site, and then there's the election day. I think we're all in agreement that election day would be better, the residents would be better served at that site, if it's possible, and, and going forward, they would be better served. Is there any comments from the commission on the municipal elections? Go ahead.
Okay. I personally think that if we're going to do this, we need to do it for all elections, all of them. There cannot be any ambiguity to the resident and voter on where they are supposed to go and vote. So, it, it, municipal elections, early voting, and, and election day, I think it all needs to be in the same place.
Right. On, on election, on early voting, I'm not as concerned, I mean, look, I, I, I agree with you. I, let me start there, I agree with the uniformity is good. I'm not as concerned, let's say, the manager comes back, I think the manager should talk to, to, and, and bring back more information on whether that's, that two-week period at the rec is, is a good idea.
That's, yeah, that was my other...
But, yeah, but I'm not as concerned, because early voting, as we all know, you can vote at any site in the county. So, a lot of people will vote next to their jobs, people vote on their, you know, the way to pick up their kids next to their school. So, it's not as important to me as the election day voting, where obviously, that's, you, you can only vote at one site, your assigned site. So, for the municipal elections, are we all on the same page that they should be at Rebecca Sosa? I, are, are, is there any, is there any other opinions on that?
The table may have studied whatever they want, I just give you my...
No, no, I, no, I understand. I, because what I, I would like to, I would like, I, on the things that we agree on, I would like to move. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to sit and put it for another agenda, another agenda. When it comes to putting the election day, you wanted to talk to, to the Elections Department, I would suggest, you know, doing a resolution right now from the table, you know, urging the, the, with our, with our opinion on the election, election day voting should be at that site for precinct 426. For the, for the election, for the municipal election, you know, if, if, if everyone is in agreement on that, I say we put a first reading in the next meeting. But I'll, I'll let that, I'll let Commissioner Blanca deal with that, that's her item, for deal with the manager on, on that. I say that we move forward, we, we do an impromptu resolution from the table here. If we have, you know, if we're all in agreement, we amend the agenda to include a resolution, urging the supervisor of elections of Miami-Dade County to put the election day precinct, for precinct 426, at Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility.
Yes.
So, with that, can I get a motion on that? A motion for Commissioner Blanca?
Will this, will this be for all elections?
No, this is, this is just urging, this is just urging the, the county, the county of Elections Department to move the voting precinct from, for precinct 426, which is only West Miami, to election day voting to the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility instead of the Open Bible Temple outside of the city.
Okay.
So, I have a motion for Commissioner Blanca on her item.
Yes, sir.
And then do I have a second from anyone?
Second.
Okay. Call the roll on that.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Well, if it's not broken, don't fix it, I tell you. To me, this has been working so, so far, it's been working well.
On, on, on which, which issue are you talking about, on...
The elections now has been, happened here very well.
Right, no, I, this is not talking about the, the city elections. This is talking only about, this is only, just to clarify, this is only talking about the election day in, in August and November, election day?
County-wide election.
For, for that election day, which right now, you and I have to vote at Open Bible Temple outside the city.
You're talking about election coming now in August?
In August, November.
In November?
Yeah, only election day.
Only, only...
Election day.
Election day.
Where right now, you have to vote at...
Early elections?
No, this is not talking about early election, this is not talking about early voting.
Only for the election day?
Election day. Where you, where you today have to vote in Open Bible Temple outside the city.
I know.
Yeah. So, that, that, you know, there's, where other people, by the way, people from outside the city have their precinct at the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility.
The only point I see what the Commissioner Blana said, if the Elections Department have to change the, the address in the, in the voter registration.
Right.
For, for one election, for one day, this is going to be a, to me, is going to be a problem for them.
Yeah, I mean, that's up, I, I think that's up to them, but it would be going forward, right? It wouldn't be just for this election.
Well, like the city clerk said, it might not happen this year.
Right.
It might just not happen this year at all. So, uh, uh, come August and come November, nothing's gonna change and, 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 and knowing government and bureaucracy, bureaucracy, the way it works is, we're probably gonna be, we're probably gonna be stuck w- w- with the same precincts. But going forward next year, in twenty twenty-three, um, I mean, uh, right, twenty, twenty-two, right, twenty twenty-four, uh, you know, if we urge them now to, and request that they, that they do it, maybe by then, you know, we can, we can have it done. You know, everything in government takes a long time, so we might as well ask now ahead of time.
Let's be optimistic, maybe it will happen for them.
Well, I, I, I mean, right now, as the mayor said, we have outsiders, residents that live outside the city of West Miami come into our, you know, the Rebecca Sosa, uh, building to vote, so why not us? Why not West Miami residents? Does, doesn't make any sense, so, so that's why I second the motion.
In the last election, they, they were voting in, in the Rebecca Sosa, people from the, out of the city?
Yes.
The district?
Yes. That's precinct four twenty-eight.
Four twenty-six and four twenty-seven?
No, no, only four twenty-five or four twenty-seven.
Four twenty-seven, twenty-six, isn't it?
We vote, we vote at Open Bible. Yeah, Open Bible Temple outside the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And some other area is assigned to our city.
Twenty-seven was down the little church.
Right.
And they moved there.
Mm-hmm.
No, well, yes, okay, let's go.
Can you, can you do the roll call?
Yes, we have a motion, we have a second, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes? Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
We will be providing you with an update immediately, as soon as tomorrow, um, and Ari, you're gonna reach out to the Elections Department, I'll be talking to John Michael and we're gonna send you an update on this, uh, but it, it can be done.
And, and please, please continue working with Commissioner Blanca on, on this item.
Yes.
Um, next item, thank you.
Next item is, uh, item J, discussion in reference to Fourth of July, twenty twenty-two slash City of West Miami seventy-fifth anniversary by Mayor Diaz-Padron and City Manager.
Okay, I brought it up, but I think this is, uh, anyone's item, um, if July fourth is coming up.
We better have one this year.
I think we better have one, I think people have spoken very loudly they want events back, um, especially one as popular as that one. I don't know what else to discuss except maybe going up to bid for the fireworks or, or, or re, or redoing the fire contract for, you know, how it's been, the fireworks, I don't know if we still have that contract, Mr. Penna would have to educate me on that.
And the watermelons.
And the watermelons. Um, yeah, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner's Vice Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Penna.
I have reached out to the company that provides us with the fireworks and I was gonna give it to the manager for the next, uh, commission meeting, but they have provided us with a proposal for fireworks. And I believe the, it went up slightly, we usually spend about ten thousand and I believe the proposal's like for twelve-somethings, twelve and change. Uh, so if you will, if you're gonna have the event, we need to commit to them because they've run out of, uh, actual pyrotechnic people that are able to fire off the fireworks. So since tonight you have amended the agenda, I would suggest that, uh, give the manager a cap, uh, as far as for the fireworks cost and I will provide her with the quote that I received.
Okay.
I, I wanna add something to that, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that we have time to actually physically go through that sealed bid process. However, we may reach out to other vendors and I mean, this, this company that did it for us did a great job. Um, so it's not that, it's just that we wanna follow the code and the, the code says we should try to procure other prices, so...
Get with the attorney on that, obviously when it comes to the pricing, um, I think we all have to decide whether we wanna move forward with the event. Here, Mr., Commissioner Chavez hasn't spoken today, so...
He's the expert.
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, I, I grew up in this neighborhood, as you did as well, and I have a lot of fond memories of going to these types of events growing up, so I think we need to start bringing these back for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I like, may I, may I?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a friendly, so, Mr., Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
I want to, I'd like to make a friendly suggestion to you and to Mayor Padron, Diaz-Padron. In this case, for the Fourth of July, the fireworks, I'd like to make a friendly suggestion. Go and make a visit to Commissioner Rebecca Sosa because she always, oh, many times, she has been helping the city with the funds for the, and the, we have been after the pandemic, we should, if we can, have a nice fireworks. And then I suggest go and visit the Commissioner Sosa, he maybe, she maybe do something.
I think that's a very good suggestion, I think we can do that.
I think so.
I think, I think that's a good idea.
We can drink coffee and, and ask her for a donation.
I'm sure, I'm sure she will be all ears.
Absolutely.
That's a very good suggestion. Uh, so how do you wanna move forward? Um, Mr. Penna suggested, uh, giving you a cap, but what, how do you wanna move forward?
I think, uh, again, an impromptu resolution would be necessary, uh, and it would be a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to secure prices for, um, the firework display for the Fourth of July and further authorizing a cap not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars to be funded from the special events account for the West Miami Recreation Center Enterprise Fund and providing an effective date.
Okay, that wording sounds good, can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Do you understand that I have to, like, generate minutes of this, how many amendments to the agenda?
That's a, that's a five out of five, right? So fourth is voted, the, the, the agenda is amended and the item is adopted. Um, this is also, we, we contemplated adding on the city's seventy-fifth anniversary because we're gonna have fireworks, so you might as well do it. Um, the city's seventy-fifth anniversary was in April, but obviously we were in election and things got complicated, so we'll just add it on to this event as a, as a rider. So, um, and I think that's a good idea that the manager had. So, next item.
Mr. May, may I, may I go back to this item?
Absolutely.
And suggest something? I know that you all had appointed and, uh, under the previous administration had appointed a committee to serve. I think we should have at least one meeting where we can get something with substance to work with in, in terms of the anniversary committee.
Was that committee ever finally fully appointed?
The committee of one, right there.
Yes.
Ivan Chavez Senior.
Good, okay, perfect, I like that idea.
Um, right, so that we can get an idea of what other, what other things we could bring on July fourth to the park for the residents and so...
Yep, absolutely.
We can get them to, you know, to participate.
That, that's a, that's a very good idea.
Beer, probably.
She must watermelon for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I gotta bring that back.
So, um, is this a, a committee meeting that you would like to chair, that you would like publicly announce, would you like staff to...
No, in fact, in fact, um, if, if everyone's okay, if everyone's okay with it, um, Commissioner Chavez, do you, do you wanna, you wanna chair that meeting?
I'll chair it.
I think that, I think that would be a, be a, be a good thing. So, um, we'll have Commissioner Chavez chair that meeting of, of the residents and, and that way we have someone from our body here and, uh, I think that works, go ahead.
Um, would you be okay if we scheduled that meeting for next week?
You would schedule, I mean, that, that, you, you, you schedule that, you schedule that with, with Commissioner Chavez and, and the board? Um, I don't think we, our schedules really matter there, so. Schedule that in private with Commissioner Chavez and, and the board. Um, next item, please.
Yes, item twelve, consent agenda items. You have one, two, three, four items for the consent agenda.
Does anyone need to pull any of these items or can we take them all together?
Don't take it all together.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Um, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Items pass. Aren't you guys glad I brought the consent agenda items?
Yes.
To, uh, you know, onto the agendas? All right, um, item thirteen.
Yes, good of the order.
I got something.
Go ahead.
All right, I, um, this is, eh, I'd like to make a few comments in regards to, uh, the manager's, uh, report. Madam Manager, the street sign project, um, I think that you need to make an effort and that you need to, uh, allocate the manpower necessary to move this project along. It's been, I mean, this started with Mayor Moinia. We have Mayor Rodriguez and now we got...
Street signs, you mean entrance signs or, or the...
The block ones.
The avenues and the streets.
Clarification.
So now we have Mayor Eric Diaz-Padron, so we've had three mayors in this administration and that project, you know, is still, you know, it's, 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 to my satisfaction, it's, it's not. You know, we have green street signs still in some areas, we have small signs in some areas where there need to be the bigger signs, we have bigger signs in some areas where we need to have the smaller signs, we have the smaller signs with no, with no rectangular new decal, you know, depicting the City of West Miami logo, we have big signs that, with the circular s- sign, uh, logo for the City of Mi- uh, West Miami, uh, that, that they don't have. So, so it's, it's a mismatch of street signage that we have in reference to streets and avenues. So I really, really hope, and you know what, I've gotten so many excuses, you know, that I, uh, I'm distraught, I mean, I don't know what to think, I don't know what to say anymore. And I've said these very words, sitting here at other commission meetings. So I implore you to find the will to allocate enough manpower to get this project moving.
So on, on, on that note, and, and I, I wanna close out the meeting, but on that note, uh, you know, to, to, to your, not to your point, but to, as a, as a supplement to that, if we could just find some uniformity, because I, I will say that, that, that thing where some of them say West Miami, some of them have a logo, some of them are big, some of them are tall, you know, if we can just find some uniformity going forward, I think that would be very helpful.
Well, uh, well, Mr. Mayor, what, what we decided was that, that there are some, there are some, uh, you know, signs that are, that are a little taller and we decided to put those on the main thoroughfare.
I remember.
Like A Street, Fifty-seventh Avenue, Sixty-seventh Avenue, uh, Silvania, a- and those will ha- would have the circular logo. And the interior of the city would be the smaller ones and they would, since, since the smaller, since the smaller ones have a cutout...
Oh, I understand.
Which is rectangular, Mr. Penna obtained some of these signs. So, eh, you know, we di- we discussed the, the uniform at a issue a while ago and we had all agreed that, you know, it wouldn't look so bad. And, and I don't think it does because it's, it's just the perimeter of the city...
Right.
That's gonna have the circular ones and then the interior, it's all gonna have. But we, we need to have it, we need to do it, we need to get this done. I mean, when, when are we gonna get this done, you know, when I, when I retire from here? I don't know.
Well, that's never to get done, there, what the hell? No, but, uh, let's, uh, Madam Manager, please continue to work with the Vice Mayor.
Do I have, you know, do you have something to say? Do I have, you know, uh, at, at least your commitment that you are going to, you know, give it the old college try?
Yes, you have a, you have our commitment, but please understand before you leave this meeting that we've had real challenges and the real challenges involve COVID and then all the other, it's like we come in here every day and we have to reprioritize our priorities. So it, it's not easy and I don't wanna get into a debate, it's, it's, uh, it's been a great meeting.
I don't wanna debate.
You have, no, no, I understand.
But I've gotten, I got one excuse after another excuse, after another excuse.
Please, but ju- just, just please, um, I, I think, I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a priority of the table, it's a priority of, of this entire commission and I know I have spoken to you as well, Madam Manager, about that.
Yes, sir.
So I, um, please, please continue to work with the Vice Mayor on this and with all of us and keep us up to... Mr. Chavez, go ahead.
Before the meeting closes out, I wanted to ask, just so that it's announced again for those listening, I'm chairing a board now, I'm not sure who the board members are.
We will be given the list, I think you might know one of them, at least.
I think so.
Um, but there's a, there was a, there was a board that was appointed, I remember my appointee was Natalie Millian.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, you will be given a list of who, who's, who is on that board and it will, uh, work around, uh, your schedule. Um, the manag- the manager and, and the clerk or whoever's gonna take that on, uh, will work with you on that. Um, and I'm sure you will do an excellent job and I think it's important and I think you might be a model going forward, hopefully, so don't, don't screw it up.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, with that, can we, uh, get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, meeting adjourned.